Good morning.
Good morning.
I think we're ready to get started here. First, I wanted to thank all of you for taking time out of your busy day to come support this important session we're having this morning. We do have a full schedule and want to be sure that we leave plenty of time for questions, so thank you also for your promptness in assembling. So as most of you saw, there was a message sent out company-wide earlier this week. It had a little background on our special guest this morning, and it mentioned that he's the chairman of the Senate Committee on Armed Services. In addition, a Navy veteran, a longstanding member of the United States Senate, and former presidential nominee, please provide a warm welcome for Senator John McCain.
Well, thank you, Dan, and thank all of you for being here, and thanks for mentioning that I lost running for president. I appreciate that, Dan. Thanks a lot. After I lost, I slept like a baby. Sleep two hours, wake up and cry. Sleep two hours, wake up. I thank all of you for being here. I thank you for your great work in a very competitive business. Just had an excellent briefing on the outstanding product that you produce, and also I'm very just proud to note that you are active in seeking to hire veterans. I thank you for that, and I thank those who are here who have served in the military. And I just wanted to mention that I will be glad to answer any question about Donald Trump, although I certainly am clueless as to what's going on. So all I know is it's going to be huge, and I'm going to make America great again, right? Okay. And in case you missed it, the approval rating of Congress is 14 percent. Have you seen that? Is there anyone here in the 14 percent that approves of Congress? Please raise your hand. I don't think so. If you just raised your hand, please do not drive an automobile here in Tucson. You're a danger to yourself and others. I came back from trying to do the Lord's work in the city of Satan and went through Sky Harbor Airport. A guy ran up to me and said, "Hey, has anybody ever tell you you look a lot like Senator John McCain?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Doesn't it sometimes make you mad as heck?" So thank all of you, and thank you for the good work that you do. I thank you for the fact that we are now living in most interesting times, and I'd just like to cover a few issues with you, and then I'd like to respond to any questions or comments or insults that you might have. So to start with, I think it's important for us to talk about the challenges that the major challenges to us and our children and our grandchildren here in the state of Arizona and in the Southwest. And my friends, that's fire and water. I know that it's kind of a dull subject, but literally our future of our state and our children rests on how we address both of those issues. I'm sure you know we've been in a 14-year drought, that there are predictions that by 2018, there may be reductions in our water supply from the Colorado River because of the lack of water. The drought, it does not seem to have been relaxed, and we need to make sure that we do a number of things, and one of them is to complete the Indian water settlements. When we signed treaties with the Native Americans and put them on reservations, we guaranteed them certain water rights, and so our water rights are -- so it takes precedent overall, so we have to settle the Indian water claims. There's a lot of things we can do. None of them are very pleasant, but one of them, very interestingly, is a thing called salt cedar. I don't know if you've even ever heard of it, but back in the 1930s, they decided to import this invasive species to hold riverbanks. Well, it's now a prodigious drinker of water. In fact, one salt cedar consumes about 300 gallons of water a year, cumulatively about 84,000 acre feet. Believe me, that's one heck of a lot of water, and it's all up and down the Colorado. It's all up and down our rivers, the Gila and all of them, and we are trying to eradicate it. It's very tough to eradicate. It has very deep roots, and once you pull it out, even then, you've got to go back every year for a couple of years to make sure nothing grows back, and you've got to replace it with something, whether it be cottonwood trees, or desert willow, or other native species. If you go down to Yuma sometime at the Yuma Heritage Crossing, you'll see what happened when we had a cooperation between the local Indian tribe, the city of Yuma, and Yuma County. They went in and took 400 acres and pulled out all of the salt cedar and planted native, the desert willow, cottonwoods, et cetera. They've now seen endangered species that they've never seen in 50 years that are back there. So we can do it, but it's going to be expensive and tough. And we're going to have to address that. It's one of the easiest ones. The next one, of course, is fire. 20 percent of our national forests in Arizona have been consumed by fire in the last 15 years. You can do the math as to what's going to happen if that continues to all of our national forests here in Arizona. And I know that you know that when a forest is burnt to the ground and it rains, it no longer holds the water. It just runs off. So that exacerbates our problem with the water supply. The only way we're going to really fix the problem is through forest thinning, because over the years, thanks partially to the environmental community, we have not cleared out the dead wood that accumulates in the forest. I've flown over -- you may remember the huge fire we had a few years ago called the Ched Sky Fire, and I flew over it with John Kyle in a helicopter. It was so hot because of all this fuel that built up underneath it that the trees literally exploded. If you thin the forest, then if there's a fire, and there will always be fires, then it just sweeps through. So the answer is that these -- there's some commercial enterprises that are taking this small diameter trees in the wood, and they're turning them into pulp. They're turning into those logs that you put in your fireplace. Those are a product of it. But the problem -- we've had huge problems with the Forest Service on it. But we can't -- there's not enough taxpayers' dollars for us to do the thinning with your tax dollars. It's got to be done with commercial enterprises. And I know that this subject sounds a little bit dull, but believe me, unless we address these two issues, our kids are not going to enjoy the Arizona that we have. Yesterday, we had a meeting in the governor's office with the Navajo and Hopi tribal leaders, and we're going to work on this final water settlement to try to make sure we know how much water Arizona has. And again, I know that it's dull and boring, but all of us should be aware of the impact of these two issues on the future of our state and the Southwest. The other issue I want to mention to you is the VA. I know that you know, and you've been following the problems with the VA system, and I think you may recall that it all started with 50 veterans up in Phoenix who were on a nonexistent waiting list and died, and I'm sure you remember that. And then the scandal spread throughout the system, and we've been working very hard to try to reform the system. Veterans are still not getting the care that they deserve as far as because of their service to the country. After the scandal, I was asked by the Republican leadership in the Senate to negotiate with none other than Senator Bernie Sanders, who was chairman of the Veterans Affairs Committee in the Senate. Now, Senator Sanders and I admire each other. I don't agree with him. He is the announced socialist, so you can imagine, with his view of the role of government and my role of the view of the government, it was very interesting conversations that we had. But we finally came up with an agreement, and a major part of it is a thing called a choice card. And I had to compromise on it, but right now, if you live more than 40 miles from a VA facility, or you wait more than 20 days, then you are eligible to go get a card, just like a Medicare card. And we'll take that card and go to the caregiver of your choice, rather than get on some long waiting list, et cetera. It's been very successful. It's been resisted by the VA, and it's been resisted by, very frankly, by some of the veteran service organizations, which has been disappointing to me. But what I want to do is make it so that a veteran who needs care -- and by the way, the VA does a wonderful job at PTSD, at traumatic brain injury, at prosthesis, many of the things, and they have some wonderful people that work there. But the system, the system as we know from the scandal that you saw, is broken, and it needs to be fixed. And one of the areas that is most frustrating to all of you and to me is the lack of accountability. After all this scandal that went on, only one person, only one person has been fired in all of the VA. You can't do that. You can't do that. You have to hold people accountable, and so we're trying to change the law to -- but very frankly, the federal employees' unions, which they are part of, are fighting that every step of the way. So we've got a long way to go. Finally, there's one other issue that I've been engaged in. I know that concerns all of us, and that is that 8,000 veterans a year commit suicide. That's an unacceptable number, obviously, 8,000. And so the parents of a young Marine who committed -- former Marine who committed suicide came to see me, along with an organization called the Concerned Veterans of America, and we passed a bill unanimously called the Clayhunt Suicide Prevention Act, and it provides counseling, it wants early detection, it provides a whole range of areas to try to catch this symptoms that leads to suicide before it happens. And one of the areas, by the -- one of the indicators that we look at and have found with these terrible suicides is homelessness. If a veteran is homeless, the likelihood of that veteran committing suicide is dramatically increased. So one of the areas that I think we should all get behind is try to find domiciles for homeless veterans. And so that issue is going to go on. Now, I'd like to talk to you about what's going on in the world very briefly, and then I'd like to answer any questions that you may have. Two weeks ago, the Director of National Intelligence, our top national intelligence person in our government, a guy named General Clapper, testified before the Armed Services Committee. And I wish that every American could have seen what he had to say. He was a very measured man, not alarmist, didn't yell, doesn't do anything, but basically he said that the United States of America is in more danger of attacks than any time since the end of World War II, that there will be more attacks in Europe, there will be attacks in the United States, because there's a place called Raqqa in Syria that ISIS controls, and they are training and telling young men, mostly young men, to join the refugee flow and get to Europe and try to get to the United States of America, get on a secure site, and then plan attacks. One of the things we're finding out about Brussels already is the extent of the organization and the network of these people was far more complex and detailed than we had ever anticipated. And so we're in very dangerous times, and now we see the Chinese filling in islands so that they can control one of the most important area of waterways in the world. We see Vladimir Putin continuing his activities to try to restore what was once the Russian Empire, and we are seeing, very frankly, a decline in American influence in the world. America has always led. We have led, and that also means that we have sacrificed more than anybody else. But a stable and peaceful world is also in our interest. That's why we have joined an organization we call NATO, which was successful in defeating -- winning the Cold War. We have joined an alliance with Japan and Korea. After the Korean War, and there's -- South Korea was devastated. I mean, it was a wasteland because they'd fought up and down the Korean Peninsula for several years, and so we stayed. We left 38,000 -- there's 38,000 troops there today. You know, the fifth largest economy in the world today is the Korean economy, but it was because we stayed and we helped them build a democracy, and we helped them have all the fundamentals of a free and open society. It's not perfect, but if we had walked away from them, it would have been -- I do not know what would have happened if we'd have walked away from Japan and Germany after World War II. So the United States has to be involved and engaged, and it's in our interest. Right now, you see the North Koreans starting to try to test missiles and nuclear weapons. It's not in our interest to see a South Korea that is not capable of defending itself. So that's just an example. So there's a great debate that's been going on in the United States for ever since the end of World War I, and that is what we call America Firsters. And there are those that want to withdraw to Fortress America, don't have anything to do with anything else that's going on in the world, and just take care of America, which has a certain attraction to it. But my friends, in this case, for example, with ISIS, we're going to either fight them there, or we're going to fight them here, because they are intent on attacking the United States of America and Europe. So what is the answer? And some people do not agree with this. I think we need 10,000 American troops, 90,000 Turks, Saudis, others, Sunnis, with them lead, them paying for it, but America has the kind of expertise, frankly, the expertise, the kind of technology that is right here that is necessary in order to succeed. It's not going to be easy. These people obviously are more than willing to give up their own lives in order to take the lives of others in the suicide attacks that you see constantly. But if we don't do that, then I don't see any cessation in them wanting to launch further attacks. By the way, we have information that in Raqqa, they have a chemical weapons factory now that they're starting to work on. Chemical weapons, as we know, are terrible weapons to -- certainly slaughters innocent men, women, and children. Finally, let me say that I am very optimistic about America. I'm very optimistic when I visit facilities like this and have the opportunity to meet people like you, because you're what America is all about. Some of us are old enough, very few here, but remember when, for example, that we had to wait in gas lines for hours and hours to get a tank of gas because the oil -- the Middle East countries had cut off the oil supply. Now we are energy independent, thanks to fracking. We will never have to depend on oil from the Middle East again. That's very good news. And someday, we will be able, frankly, under the right president, to send natural gas over to Eastern Europe so that those countries can be independent of Russian energy and thereby free them up from the threat always of a cutoff of energy to countries like Poland and Hungary and Romania and others. Also, manufacturing. This is a great example here of a technology and the leading edge of technology that is what America's future is all about. We're not going to be able to compete with a lot of foreign countries that have very inexpensive labor. Labor-intensive work is conducted in other countries in the world, not here. But what you are producing is the cutting edge of technology. By the way, safety is certainly something that you can be very proud of. We have a lot safer operation of aircraft now, thanks to your product, and also an ability, when the tragedy does occur, to be able to ascertain what caused it so that we can prevent it from happening again. I think you should be proud of that product. But manufacturing jobs are not coming back the way that we want them to. That's one of the reasons why a lot of Americans are frustrated. A lot of blue-collar workers that were in the, for example, in Michigan, that were working in the automotive industry are no longer seeing those jobs come back. A lot of Americans see very wealthy Americans getting a lot wealthier. Wild middle-income Americans have not seen any real improvement since the meltdown of 2008. So you're seeing a frustration exhibited both on the -- in the case of Donald Trump and also in the case of Bernie Sanders. I ran into a guy the other day here in Tucson, and I said, "Who are you for?" And he said, "I'm for Trump." I said, "Fine, why?" And he said, "Well, he's going to make America great again." I said, "Well, who's your second choice?" He said, "Sanders." So we're in a very interesting time politically. Finally, my friends, this device is changing the world. It's changing America, and it's changing the world. Don't ask me why. Every time there's a new one, I have to buy it, but anyway. But I should get some kind of award from Apple. But anyway, this device is information, which is knowledge, which is power. More Americans and more people in the world are able -- more access to information than at any time in history since the invention of the printing press. And over time, when people have knowledge, then they're not going to be satisfied with a life under dictatorships and oppressive regimes, although certainly we have seen, particularly in the Middle East, we've seen it slide backwards, and backwards significantly in recent years. But it's incredible what this is. There's a cloak of anonymity, which makes for a very unpleasant kind of license for people. There's sexting, as you know, and that's -- there's an underside to it. But there's also an ability for people to obtain knowledge and communicate with one another in a way that 10, 15 years ago, we wouldn't even have imagined. And I'm very proud of the fact that I was recently awarded an award for one of the top 10 tweets of the last 10 years. Now, look at an old guy like me. You wouldn't think that's possible, really? Well, here's what happened. After the passage of Obamacare, one of the provisions of Obamacare, probably most of you did not notice, was an increase in taxes on tanning beds. I obviously opposed Obamacare, not for that particular reason, but -- so a great actress and icon of America by the name of Snooki, some of you may know who Snooki of Jersey Shore is, she tweeted, "I'm so mad at Obama for raising taxes on tanning beds." If you ever saw Snooki, you could see that she probably is a patron of those facilities. She said, "I am so mad at Obama for raising taxes on tanning beds." John McCain would never do that because he's so pale. So I tweeted back, "You're right, Snooki. I would never raise taxes on tanning beds. P.S., be sure to wear sunscreen." So I won an award for that. So I, you know, one -- you know, not a lot you get credit for in Washington these days, but that was the top 10 tweet of the last 10 years, according to the Washington Post. I come to you as an awardee. So I want to thank all of you for coming, and now I'd like to, if you'd like to respond to a question or comment, thanks again. Yes?
How about I -- on the veteran --
Could you take the microphone?
Oh. On the veteran's situation, is there any progress on the claim status?
What?
A claim status, like when you appeal for a claim at the VA? Why does it take so many years?
Yes, there is a claims process. It is very long and very cumbersome. We handle, at any one time in our offices here in Arizona, 500 to 1,000 cases of veterans who have not been able to bring that claim forward, they've not -- where they've been turned down for what they believe is arbitrary reasons, and so we take up their cases and we go to the VA for them and try to get what they have deserved, ranging from disability claims to -- about two months ago, a guy came -- his wife came to us. He's 92 years old. He had been a prisoner in Germany in World War II. He'd been a pilot who was shot down by the Germans, spent two years in the German prison camp, and at the end was marched out by the Germans. An amazing story. He had not received his medals, and his wife came to see us, and we went through the process and dug through all the records, and we had a nice ceremony out at the retirement facility that he -- in which he resides, and we had all the people there, and our head of our Arizona Guard was there, and we gave him his medals. That, you know, it was a really nice thing that we do, but then we have a number of cases where they drag out and drag out and drag out. So there is an appeals process. Does it work efficiently? Honestly, I don't think all these veterans would be coming to our office if it did act effectively.
Yes, my father was one of the ones waiting for treatment and passed away, but the claim was never settled, you know? And I thought, it's not the money that's involved, it's the principle of the thing, and I will keep fighting until they send me at least a letter saying that it was satisfied or whatever, you know? But I just think it's so unfair for them to have to wait so long.
First of all, please accept all of our sympathy for your father's service to the country, and all I can say is that I will continue to do everything in my power to see that that kind of thing is not repeated. And by the way, I -- he was Hispanic?
Yes, he was Hispanic, World War II vet, and he was the only Mexican in his platoon in the whole area, and he was experimented on with all these gases that they gave him.
Well, all I can say is we honor his memory. Thank you for his service and sacrifice, and I will do everything I can to see that that story is not repeated. So thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, on the Vietnam, when you come to Washington to visit your money, you should go to the -- down to the various war memorials we have. The World War II Memorial is a wonderful place. We have a thing called Honor Flight now, where from every state, they bring a group of World War II veterans, fly them into Reagan, and then immediately take them over to the World War II Memorial. It's really very touching. As you know, they're obviously not going to be with us forever. And then the Vietnam War Memorial, there's 55,000 names on black granite there. It's dramatically different from the World War II Memorial. And the reason why I bring it up is if you look at those names, you will see many, many hundreds, thousands of Hispanic names of those young men who were drafted at the age of 18. They were not rich, did not have a doctor who would give them a deferment, and went and served and sacrificed. Thank you for your father's service. Yes, sir.
Yes, I guess you got a good tour of the facility, and I'm one of the people that every now and then, once a year, Sikorsky hosts a march in Washington to get support from the Senate to support funding for the Black Hawk helicopter programs. So I've tried to get into your office a couple of times when I've been up there, and every time I'm there, you're here. So it's good to see you finally, but if you --
Thank you. The Black Hawk program is doing fine.
And we appreciate it. So these people here build the products that go into those helicopters, so we appreciate your continued support.
Well, thank you very much, and if you're not busy, I'd like to take you with me to various places. No, the Black Hawk program is doing just fine, but thank you for coming. Great. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
President Obama nominated Merrick Garland as the Supreme Court nomination to repeat, to replace Justice Scalia. Yet Mitch McConnell said that we're not going to pursue that during this term of President Obama, wait till the next president comes forward. Yet we've had several of the Republican senators, seems like jumping ranks and running over to interview him and wanting the process to go forward. Is this one of the reasons why the Republicans are losing so much faith with their constituents there? Is because they see these things where they say one thing and they do something totally different?
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I was told not to ask embarrassing questions there, but that's me, so what can I say?
Thank you. And by the way, that's why I have these meetings, is so that people like you can ask a question directly, and thank you for doing so. I'm not here just to answer the easy ones, but the hard ones. Here's my point. But let me start out by saying, I'm with Joe Biden. Joe Biden and I are like that. Joe Biden gave a speech on the floor of the Senate in 1992, when we had a Republican senator, and there was a vacancy, and it was going to be a vacancy on the Supreme Court, and Joe Biden said, "Under no circumstances should we have a confirmation of a member of the Supreme Court until after the election, and let the people decide." So I'm with Joe Biden. Let's wait until after the election and let the people decide. He and I are like that, obviously. But seriously, seriously, isn't there a little hypocrisy there on the part of my Democrat friends, who when we had a Republican president in an election year, said, "Oh, no, we don't want to take up the nomination until after the election, and let's let the people decide." That's my view. Let's let the people decide. My friends, probably one of the least appreciated elements of this presidential election will be the fact that there is a 4-4 alignment in the United States Supreme Court, and the next person who is nominated and confirmed by the Senate will tip the scales one way or the other. There's no such thing as an absolutely neutral nominee. And there's a number of really important issues before the United States Supreme Court. There's a couple of people who have, as you mentioned, changed their view, Senator Kirk of Illinois, and I think, as far as I know, there's only been two so far.
Or Jeff Flake, do you think?
No, I don't think Jeff, Jeff is not in favor of considering.
I'm not sure if he was going to interview the nominee.
But I think, but I think he's made it very clear that he would not support the process. You know, somebody said to me, "Why don't you see the individual?" Well, I'd rather see another individual that comes for the Black Hawk, rather than meet with somebody that I'm not going to in any way support the process to go forward. I'm not the busiest person on earth, but why should I meet with somebody who I am not going to in any way support that we move forward with that process? Now, my friends, all I can say is that we have a polarized Congress of the United States, and it's not helpful. And it accounts for those approval ratings that I was talking about. But this is too important an issue, no matter what the polls say. In my view, it's too important an issue for us not to let the American people decide. And that will take place in November, and that then will be the judgment that I will respect. Now, I may not vote for or against whoever it is, but at least that the American people have made a decision. Thank you for the question, and I know that a lot of Americans are, feel as you do, that this is a commitment that we should keep.
Hi. Excuse me. Sorry. When I was a teen and a young adult, I had the opportunity to work for the National Forest Service, Coronado National Forest Service, and I also worked somewhere higher on Fort Huachuca. And both times, we cleared forests, especially after fires. When you're talking about doing all that, getting all that dead wood, is there a program still available, Young Adult Conservation Corps or something like that, that can go out and have an opportunity to work and help the community get the water level back up again?
There's just, there's just too much. We, as you know, that program, the Civilian Conservation Corps, was an excellent one, particularly during the Depression, as we put people to work. But the, literally, hundreds of thousands of acres of land in our national forests, it requires a commercial enterprise, so that those people can go in and do the clearing and take that product and make a product that they can sell out of it, and we will just release the land to them. I think that if you constituted a corps, stood up a corps that could do all of that thinning, the cost would be prohibitive. I mean, you would have to pay minimum wage at least, and you would have to have volunteer, you know, people who wanted to do that, very hard labor. So I just don't think it's a, there's just too much acres that need to be cleared. I'm all for national service, I'm all for AmeriCorps, I'm all for Teach for America. I've been one of the strongest advocates of citizen engagement in all of these activities that can help America, whether it be the Peace Corps, AmeriCorps, Teach for America. But it's just, it's too big a job. It has to be done by a commercial enterprise. But they can help. All right, John?
Senator, to the point you just made on the clearing in northern Arizona, a couple of the articles that I've read is that, at least so far, this is not one of the finest examples of American industry. Is there evidence that they're getting better, or is this going to be a continuing problem?
There's a problem, they have not done as good a job as they should, but the major problem, and Jeff Flake and I have met with the head of the Forest Service on four different occasions, is the Forest Service freeing up the land to be cleared? The process has been so incredibly slow, these people haven't got the product that they can clear in order to make their, excuse me, the raw materials to make the product, and they've had to lay off people. I was just, a few days ago, up in Cholo, where they have an operation where they've had to lay off half the people. Why? Because there's not forest to thin, because the Forest Service hasn't freed it up. I'm telling you, this stuff, you can't make it up, you know? Anyway, yes?
Good morning, Senator. My name is Maricela, and I'm with Worldview Enterprises. And I just wanted to thank you for your support of Worldview in our new venture here in Arizona. We've decided to stay in Arizona, we're building our headquarters here in the Aerospace and Defense Corridor. And we are also working with Pima County and ADOT to put together the first spaceport in Arizona. So I just want to thank you. This is a great example of how Arizona is well-positioned for an emerging economy, and I hope that the state embraces us. We've hit a little bit of a rough patch, you may have seen it on the news, but I guess that's what happens when you're pioneers. There's always going to be people who are for you and people who are not as supportive. But we really do appreciate all that you've done to support our project.
Thank you. It's an exciting project, and we would be proud to see. And we have a lot of attributes of our state that would make it incredibly attractive for that kind of endeavor, and maybe we'll send you up, huh? You think? By vote of some of your colleagues, they want you sent up. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Senator McCain. Thank you for being here this morning. Two questions, if you don't mind. Were you aware that during your 2008 presidential campaign, the aircraft that you leased had Universal Avionics FMSs installed on the aircraft? The reason I know this is because we were requested to send a spare unit to be on the aircraft at all times in case there was a failure. I'm happy to report, there was no failure. Spare unit came back in its original box.
Thank you. There were several cases of sabotage, but we were able to overcome them. Thank you very much.
And I was okay if you answered no to that. It was more of a covert attempt to plug our product. My second question is regarding Social Security. According to the estimates, Social Security is predicted to go insolvent by 2034. In 2005, President Bush actually proposed a plan to the American public. That plan did not take hold or did not move forward. But in the last eight years, I haven't heard of another plan coming forward. What is the plan for this current administration or for Congress? Is there anything that is being planned at this time before it does go insolvent?
My friends, by sometime in the 2030s, the entire federal budget will be three, three items. One, Medicare, Social Security, and interest on the national debt. That's just a fact. Any person, any respectable economist will tell you. Now, the state of our economy makes those years not hard and fast years. You have a strong economy and growth, obviously, that year is delayed. If you have a weak economy and high inflation, then that year is less. But it's not a matter of when, it's a matter, whether, it's a matter of when. And so we, and as you know, the last time we really did something on Social Security was when Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill, who was the liberal Democrat Speaker of the House from Massachusetts, sat down together and then walked out and said, "We're going to fix Social Security," because it was about to go bankrupt. And you know what they did? They raised taxes. They raised the retirement age. They made other changes that were bipartisan, and it saved Social Security for X number of years, as you mentioned. We tried, a couple, three years ago, there was a gathering in order to reduce the debt, because the debt, the interest on the debt continues to eat more and more of the economy, as you know, of our budget. And that was supposed to have, as a motivator, a thing called sequestration, that if they didn't come to agreement to reduce the deficit, then there would be across-the-board cuts. They didn't come to agreement. There has been across-the-board cuts, and unfortunately, the cuts to defense have put our nation in danger. The heads of our services have testified, the uniform heads of our services have testified before the Armed Services Committee and said that the cuts that we've made in defense have put the lives of the men and women in uniform in greater danger. We don't want to do that. We don't want to do that to the men and women who are serving in the military. So we've taken this meat acts approach, rather than specifically eliminate, there's billions and billions and billions of dollars of waste and mismanagement in our federal government. You solve them by going after them and eliminating them. You don't go across the board and cut the budget for the CIA and the FBI, and as well as defense. So all I can say to you is, well, one thing is, we should have a balanced budget amendment to the Constitution that requires a balanced budget. Second thing is, that one of the reasons why I think there is so much mistrust of Washington is exactly that, that we spend money we should not be spending on. And in defense, there's no stronger defense advocate than John McCain. But when you have an aircraft carrier, the Gerald R. Ford was supposed to cost $10 billion, ended up costing $12 billion, then, my friends, I can't look you in the eye and say that we're spending your tax dollars wisely on defense. We have to reform that system. And by the way, a follow-up on that story? At a hearing, I asked the head of the United States Navy, the chief of naval operations in uniform, I said, "Who is responsible? Who is responsible for a $2 billion cost overrun on an aircraft carrier, on the Gerald R. Ford?" He said, "I don't know." He said, "I don't know." Now, my friends, two, what do you think, what do you think Arizona could do with a couple of billion dollars? So we have to stop these cost overruns. And it isn't just in defense, although defense, of course, is one of the biggest expenditures, but it's all across the board in government. And we have to fix it, otherwise, we will continue to lack the confidence of the American people. So that's one area. Will just eliminating all this waste and mismanagement solve the problem? No. But it will give the American people some confidence in us, that we are serious, and they will support fundamental reforms to prevent this train wreck which you just described. Yes, sir.
Well, Senator McCain, welcome back to Tucson, and thank you for your lifetime of service to our nation. My name is Alex Rodriguez, and I serve as Vice President for the Arizona Technology Council, the premier trade association, serving the science, technology, and innovation sectors of our economy. Some of the folks here are also members of the tech council, including Universal Avionics. So thank you to Dan for the invitation today. Senator, two points. The first is, we sure could use a little bit of your influence and help and support in building the future Universal Avionics's and Intels and Apples of Arizona. I'm talking particularly about the early-stage companies and the angel investment tax credit for the state. Obviously, this is about the state economy. And so the angel investment tax credit is a program that's worked very, very successfully to cultivate new starts and new innovation, and it's been very successful in terms of what you get back for the tax dollar. It's on the books, but we just need $7 million to recapitalize the program. And it's going through the process right now. We're hoping that Governor Ducey can support that initiative as well. $7 million, a huge multiplier impact on the other side, so we would appreciate anything you could do there. Second is, with such a boisterous national election right now, I'm really concerned, actually, about the comments coming out on NATO and the Geneva Conventions, and I'd love to hear where you stand on that, and what we could do to balance some of the commentary around those two particular points.
Thank you. And the tax credit, it's unfortunate that it's in jeopardy. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. And by the way, my friends, I am proud of the fact that the best helicopter on earth is made in Mesa, Arizona. I'm proud that the best missiles on earth are made here at Raytheon. And by the way, Raytheon is going to have a lot more business, because they are firing off a hell of a lot of their product. I am proud of all of the tech companies like this one, that provide a quality employment and a quality product. We have an enormous dependency on defense in Arizona, not to mention our bases. And I don't want to brag, but I am certainly proud of the fact, working with Martha McSally, despite the fact that she had the same number of landings and takeoffs I did not, but that we have kept the A-10. The A-10 wanted, the Air Force wanted to retire the A-10, as many of you know. They wanted to replace it with a B-1 and F-35. A-10 costs $15 million, the F-35 cost $150 million. I mean, it was insane. So we stopped them. And now guess what is being used extensively in Iraq and Syria? The A-10. It's still the best close air support weapon that has ever, frankly, almost ever invented. So every once in a while, we just have to disagree with the services, and that's what our job on the Armed Services Committee is all about. But when you look at Arizona and Luke Air Force Base, Yuma, by the way, I'm happy to tell you, the F-35 is at Luke, the F-35 is at Yuma. We are going to really have a lot more UAVs, drones, based at Fort Huachuca. It's an ideal place for it to be, and of course, organizations like this. So defense is a big, big part of our economy. The Goldwater ranges are the only place now in the United States of America where you can do extensive live ordinance training. There's other places where you can do training, but this is about the only one where you can drop live weapons. And pilots need to have had that experience, by the way. So all I can say is, technology, in my view, is the future of the economy of Arizona, both defense and non-defense. I think we have the institutions, whether we're talking about our major universities or whether we're talking about our extensive junior college institutions, and we need to do more of it. And one of the things I'd like to see, both at all levels of education, is more technology types of courses to be offered to young men and women as they leave high school. Education is obviously one of the most important aspects of, are the future of our economy. And by the way, in And by the way, in, on the issue of Field of Burn, Bernie Sanders, you see a whole lot of young people showing up at his rallies. And one of the reasons why you see that is because so many young students are carrying these huge student loan burdens. Sometimes it takes them years to pay off their student loans. And so they are unhappy, and you can understand why they're unhappy. And of course, Bernie Sanders offers free education. It's not clear to me exactly how he does that, but he has certainly attracted a significant support of young Americans. But sometimes when people graduate from something like an advanced school, they're carrying huge amounts of debt. And we don't want to do that for a whole lot of reasons, including the fact, it, it doesn't motivate people to go into these specialties that require such heavy student loans. So anyway, I want to thank all of you for coming this morning. I want to thank you for all you do. I'd like to remind you of the words of the late Mayor Daley of Chicago, who said, "Vote early and vote often." And, you know, in Chicago, it's said that they honor the dead so much that they let them vote, which I think is very nice legacy for us to adopt. And, by the way, which reminds me of a story, I don't know if you ever heard it or not, of the two inmates in the chow line in the state prison, and one of them turned to the other and said, "The food was a lot better in here when you were governor." But, so thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me today. Thank you.